Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, August 23rd, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9 North, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And a decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Cantor has been excused. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Roscoe?
Ms. Danson.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez has been excused, and Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Troppe, do you mind swearing in the professionals, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Professionals, raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-dead.
I do.
Right. Tonight, we have all sworn Mr. Aggar, Mr. Conliff, Ms. Beam, and Ms. Spiro, and I think that's all we have at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes?
We have no minutes to approve this evening.
Vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
We have a letter from Christopher Hanlon, attorney for Robert Lazzowski, asking for his application, which was carried to tonight's agenda. Be carried to September 13th, 2021, as one of his professionals was not available tonight. There's only one other bulk variance application on that night, so we just need to make an announcement for members of the public.
Okay. Anyone in the public here for case number BA 2106, Robert LeWoski? This case is going to be carried to September 15th with no further notice at 7:00 PM.
That was September 13th, correct?
Yes, September 13th.
And then tell them that's all we have.
That's all we have tonight.
We are not virtual. We're virtual next month, right?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay. So looking forward to getting out of my house doing this. But, okay. Case before the board, application before the board, case number BA 2108. Brookstone Exola Farms LLC, conditional use various bulk various preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Brookstone Exola Farm LLC is applicant Patricia and James Casey. His owner seeking a use various preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct two multi-tenant flex building with 24 tenant spaces in the building located in the building located at the center of the site with gross floor space of 39,600 square feet. The southmost building consists of six tenant spaces with gross floor area of 9,900 square feet each individual tenant space. So that consists of approximately 310 square feet of office space and 1,340 square feet of warehouse space. The site is to be accessed by a 30-foot wide asphalt driveway from Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, which also provides internal access to the site. Parking stormwater, conveyance lighting, landscape improvements also proposed on premises known as Block 219 lot 1702 526 Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled for June 14th, 2021, when it was carried to August 23rd with no further notice. Expiration date, September 2nd, 2021.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we did have one resolution on there for KBL trading.
Oh, I'm sorry. My printer skipped it. Yes, I got it. Okay, a resolution, case number BA 1702A, KBL Trading Resolution granting a minute, preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move it.
Motion by Mr. Seiya.
Second, Hughes.
Seceded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr.
Mr. Alfieri's in here for his case.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As the board chairman has summarized, this application is actually de-variance approval, also preliminary and final site plan approval. The de-variance relief is required because the property is a split-zone property. The use that is proposed is not permitted in the ARE2 section of this property, and therefore, the de-variance relief is required. We have many witnesses, several witnesses, that we're going to try to get through tonight. We understand there are only six members present this evening, and we'll have to make a determination if we finish tonight whether we want to seek a vote or not because of the missing one member, but we'd like to get as far as we could tonight before we make that decision. Our first witness is going to be Walter Hopkins, our engineer, and I would request that he be added.
He's already in there, I believe.
Okay, good. Walter?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Mr. Alfieri, why don't we bring all of your witnesses in and go ahead and swear them all in?
Okay, that's fine. So we have Walter Hopkins. Hopkins is the engineer. Scott Roth is the architect. John Ray is the traffic engineer, and Christine Cofone is the planner. They're the ones we intend to call direct witnesses if we have questions that come up and we need to bring someone else up, we would later.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, shall I swear the witnesses in at this time?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. Will Mr. Alfieri's witnesses all please raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-dead.
Yes, I do.
Right. Walt, starting with you, maybe we have your full name for the record.
Walter Hopkins, H-O-P-K-I-N.
And John Ray, you are muted right now, but can we have your name for the record?
Okay, I hope I'm unmuted. John Ray, R-E-A, a professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Thank you, and Christine Cofone, please.
Hi, everybody. Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E, licensed professional planner.
Thank you, and Scott Roth, please.
Yes, Scott Roth, R-O-T-H, licensed architect with Roth Architects, Inc.
Thank you. All sworn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, we also have a court stenographer, Deborah Masterson, who, obviously, we're not going to swear in, but if she interrupts, we know who she is and she'll, you may need a break or tell us to slow down.
And she is in the meeting, so.
Yes, thank.
We need her.
All right, so, Mr. Hopkins, now that you've been sworn in, would you place your credentials on the record, please? We're seeking to have you qualified as a professional engineer this evening.
Sure, I have a bachelor's science from Drucks University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have had the pleasure of testifying before this board and being qualified previously. And if the chairman would lack additional credentials, I can put them on the record.
Well, sir, we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Walter, will you be referring to an exhibit during the course of your testimony that we can put up?
Yes, I will have two exhibits. They are both color-rendered sites, color-rendered versions of the site with arrow photography displayed. One is kind of an overview of the site, and one's a little bit closer of the developed portion of the site.
Okay. But if you wanted Eileen, is he able to bring us an exhibit up?
He's gonna have to, because I don't have them.
I know. Okay, good. I see.
You see them?
So Walter, we, based upon the exhibit list that Eileen sent.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Is this something that was submitted 48 hours in advance?
No.
Then, I'm sorry, but the law does not allow you to use it as an exhibit.
Okay, so we.
The DCA requirements require exhibits to be submitted 48 hours in advance of a meeting, so they can be posted online so the public can view it. So, I mean, we're like 18 months into this, so, I mean, you guys should be aware of that at this point.
We could work off of the exhibits that have been submitted.
So, I would have none of that, because.
That's preferable, particularly since we're all on Zoom and there's many members of the public watching and
Yeah.
maybe disadvantaged. So, no, I completely agree with Jen. And Sal, if we can just make that adjustment, that would be appreciated.
Right, so I believe we're on A12, which is the most recent site plan submission, I believe, and that was last revised April 26th.
Yes, that's correct. That's what I have before you. It's what I have before the board is the same plans that were submitted well in advance of the meeting, and this is just simply the plans, a multi-page PDF.
Okay. Would you describe for the board first, orient the board as to where this property is located and what's currently situated?
Sure. What the board is seeing before you right now is page 2 of 13 of the plans that were submitted. It's an overall of the site prior to development. The site is an 18.57 acre site on the east side of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, just north of your middle school. It's known as Block 219 lot 17.02. There's a home next to it in this area, which is known as 526 Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, where the current owner resides. It's located in both your ARE2 and SED zones. The, I don't have it on this plan, but the undeveloped portion of the site is located in the SED zone. The developed portion is entirely within your ARE2 zone. What currently exists is somewhat of a flaglot. It's approximately 181 feet along Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. The topography of the site generally flows from the road towards the rear, where there is an existing stream, tributary, conservation easement, and flood hazard area. The flood hazard area has been determined and documented by DEP in 2020. The wetlands that are on the site have been documented and approved by DEP under a letter of interpretation in 2020 as well. Approximately two-thirds of the site is encumbered by wetlands, easements, and things of that nature. And there is a, I don't know if it shows up, there is the railroad right of way along the rear of the property.
And approximately where is the zone line, Walter, if you could show that with the arrow?
Somewhere within here.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you describe for the board?
Just be one minute, Mr. Alfieri. Can we back up one minute and let me have the screen, because one of our members is in the meeting, but I have to move him in.
Oh, sure. So I have to stop sharing?
Yes, just for a minute, Walter.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Arosco is joining the meeting.
Looks like he's in. Do you want, you want me to go back or?
Yeah, you can go ahead. Thank you.
Okay.
Sal, just for the, just for the record, Sal, you know, with Mr. Arosco coming, you just started your testimony with Walt, so that he can be, you know, certified as a voting member potentially tonight. I think it might behoove us to just go back over where we were, start again briefly with Mr. Hopkins, and just bring everybody back up to where you are now, if you wish to do that.
No, please. Walter, will you again summarize the current condition of the property, the location, and the current zoning?
Sure. Again, I'm referring to the plans that were submitted to the board well in advance of tonight's meeting, last revised April 26th, 2021. I'm referring to sheet 2 of 13 right now, which is an existing conditions plan. The site is an 18.57 acre site. It's located on the east side of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, just north of your middle school. It's known as Block 219 lot 17.02, and it's next to the current owners who reside here, which is known as 526 Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. It is located in both your ARE2 zone, which all of the development is located within, and your SED zone, which is the rear of the property, which is encumbered by wetlands, a stream of flood hazard area. There's also a railroad which borders the rear of the property as well. The site generally flows and is, the topography goes from Squonkam Yellowbrook Road towards the rear of the property. There was wetlands on the site that have been documented by DEP under the letter of interpretation obtained in last year, 2020. There's a flood hazard determination that's also been accomplished in 2020 as well. We're currently before DEP for a permit to fill some isolated pockets of wetlands. They're very tiny, small area of wetlands on site that in order to accomplish this would need to be filled. The surrounding uses to the property, to the north are single-family residential. To the south is a, it appears to be a warehouse. I don't know if it's currently occupied. It has assigned ACJD, and I think may have been a flooring company at one time. To the east is the railroad. On the other side of the railroad are single-family residential homes, and there's also a warehouse off of Southern to the rear of the property, to the east. To the west are single-family residential, a large vacant lot, and just to the southwest would be your middle school. We have had several meetings with your professionals. As a result of that, the amount of buffers, the amount of plantings has been increased. The amount of disturbance and the number of units has been decreased. What you see before you tonight, and now I'm referring to page 3 of 15, which is the dimension plan. What you see before you tonight is a total of 49,500 square feet total of flex space. I think you'll hear a lot of testimony tonight about what flex space means. And perhaps one way to describe it would be, and this is not a unique concept, but it's almost like self-storage with an office. Each unit, and we do have the architect available to testify, but each unit has an open area available for storage, a small office, approximately 300 square feet, and bathroom, a restroom. There are a total of.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
The residential house up front.
Yes.
Is that subdivided off of this property, or is it still part of this property?
It's subdivided off, I believe, in 2006.
Okay. So you do need a variance for the width of the road, correct?
Yes. The front, the frontage, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I apologize.
This line is right here. It's right behind the building. Is that the SED ARE6 line, or where does that come into?
Well, there's lots of lines. So this is a conservation easement line. There's the wetlands line. I'm sorry, this is the conservation easement line.
Okay.
This is a flood hazard line. This is the wetlands line, and this is the buffer line, wetlands buffer line.
The zone?
Get away from all of them.
And the zone line, though, is off the page on this one, or near the?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, continue.
That's okay. It's good that everybody really understands how the site is situated. So 49,500 total square feet, and what it's broken down to is 30 units. Each one is 1,650 square feet. Within that 1,160 square, 1,650 square feet is 300 square feet, which is a small office and a restroom. There's an overhead door that allows access to the storage area where a truck can pull into or things can be unloaded. The typical hours of operation for this type of facility would be 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. It's expected that there are two to three employees for each one of these units. The type, again, you'll hear more testimony about this, but the type of user for this is like, almost like a home-based retailer, a small online retailer or small contractor. I can testify that there will be no outside storage whatsoever with this use. And there's been some discussion, I think, in at least one, if not several, of the letters with regard to loading, because you're, all of your commercial zones require loading zones. We don't have a specific loading zone for this, because each unit has one built in. So these are two parking spaces for each unit that the employees would use. And then, as far as if loading is required for this specific use, they can pull into here. If it's a small vehicle, they'll sit in here if they have to. If it's a little bit larger, they're able to pull in and unload undercover. There's a 30-foot wide access aisle and driveway that connects to Squonkam Yellowbrook Road that provides free access throughout the site. We have designed it to accommodate a WB50 vehicle. However, I think the applicant is prepared to, really, what we expect with this is more of a box truck. The WB50 would be more of an occasional use. There are 96 parking spaces that are proposed. There was some discussion in some of the letters about the need for parking, so Mr. Conliff's office has kind of analyzed, we've taken one approach to analyzing the parking. Mr. Conliff reviewed that, provided a different type of analysis. And I'm sorry? It sounded like somebody was trying to say something. So the question is, do we really need as much parking, which is unusual for a commercial space? So as I indicated, we expect two to three parking spaces per unit. We generally have two to three employees per unit. We generally have two spaces in front of each unit, and we've provided additional parking in these areas here. If there's three employees, then we would be needing, for every unit, we'd be close to 90. If we're two, we're close to 60. So we haven't discussed this from Mr. Conliff's office. It came up in a pre-meeting meeting. If the board feels that we have too much parking on this, we'd certainly be open to land banking some of the parking, so that everything's been designed, it works, the drainage works, and it wouldn't get built unless the applicant and/or the township engineer thought that it was required. There will be private refuse of recycling on site. The refuse enclosure is in this area. I believe Ms. Beam's office requested that it be made of masonry. I'm not sure that was clear in our detail, but it's intended to be, and we would make sure that it is as a condition of approval.
So, Walt, can we talk about the location of it?
Okay.
I mean, I have a very, very hard time believing that a tenant in those six units on the bottom of your screen is going to literally hump their stuff all the way across the entirety of the site to get to this refuse enclosure. I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to happen, and what I think is going to happen is that the site is going to have crap all over it. And you're already in a residential zone to begin with, and you're right up against that conservation easement line. And I'm very concerned that if the board is to act favorably, and I'm not opining one way or the other in that regard, but that tiny, itty-bitty little refuse enclosure for 30 spaces, it's like the most inefficient location ever. And I don't really think it's going to work.
Okay, so I can respect that. I'm not sure I totally agree with it, but since the board has concerns with the with the number of parking, we could eliminate a few parking spaces here, and we could have it on the two corners. We could have two, we could add an additional enclosure. So, Walt, and if I could just clarify something for the board, too. So, as you alluded to in my letter, I did provide two alternate parking calculations. I think architectural plans, as you noted, classified things with warehouse and office space within each unit. So we provided the calculation for that, in accordance with the ordinance, which requires 40 spaces. I think you guys are proposing 96 parking stalls. Just to give the board a frame of reference, you know, flex warehouse, what does that entail? It's very, in quotes, what the definition is. I took a look at some of the other uses in our, in our parking requirement, and just took something, assembly, you know, which, which I've seen in other towns of what they've used for flex space, and you will see, you know, one per 800 square feet. And if you were to use that, you'd have 82 spaces. I just wanted to give it as a, as a reference point for the board on, you know, what different parking demands would be for different uses, so they can, you know, weigh that in consideration of what's being proposed. As you heard, they provide testimony. It's contractor storage. You know, when we get to Mr. Ray, I would have questions on, you know, are we having fleet vehicles on the site? You know, what size of fleet vehicles are on the site? What are the hours of operation for fleet vehicles? I know you said 8 to 4:30 PM, but whether there's any nighttime activities and operations for those uses? You know, if it's just residential contractors, or are we talking about things with heavy equipment? If there is any heavy equipment, where is it stored and parked on the site? Things like that. We'll want more clarification on, but I just wanted to give the board a basis point on that point you made, Walt.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I would also dovetail on Charlie's conversation about the hours of operation. You know, and listen, if that's what you're proposing is 8 to 4:30, that's what you're proposing, but there's not a contractor that I know that doesn't start before 8. And so, you know, I'm, I understand that you're the site engineer, but and I'm going to put this out there to Mr. Alfieri, like, I'm going to be expecting some kind of operational testimony, because you know, I'm just going to lay it out there. My husband was a contractor, and never in the 30 years that he was in business did he start at 8. He was already on the job site well in advance of 8, which would then require him to be on this site to get whatever materials he would need to get to wherever he needed to go. I think it's a little unrealistic to say 8 to 4:30. I mean, that's like an office. That's not a contractor. So I would say it's not Walt's area of expertise, and I'm sure he's just relaying to us what's been told to him. But I'm expecting that your applicant's on the line, and he's going to have to provide testimony, because again, let me reiterate, you're in an ARE2 zone here. This is a residential zone. So, you know, how introducing this type of use into this area is going to impact the people that live in and around it, not to mention the impact of the schools that are right down the street are going to be of the utmost importance to me. And I think that 8 is a little unrealistic. And all I think it's going to do, if the board acts favorably, is going to put onus on our code enforcement to make sure that it's actually happening, because I don't think it's going to happen, and then I think it's going to become a code enforcement nightmare. So just be advised that that's something that I'm definitely going to be looking for before the board takes any action on the application.
And then, just to follow up on that, Mr. Chair, so I didn't make mention to fleet vehicles, and, you know, I'll definitely have questions.
I'll definitely have questions when we get to traffic on if those are proposed, how that impacts the site traffic as a whole. Because if your parking fleet vehicles on site overnight, you know, it's not just you know, one amount of trips for those fleet vehicles leaving and coming to the site, you also have employees coming to the site to pick up those vehicles, then to leave the site. Then to bring it back to the site, then to leave the site again, so that does increase the number of trips uh and intensity of of the use on the site, so that'll definitely need to be clarified for the board as as we move forward and before we act on the application.
That that's fine, we uh, we, the applicant is present and he will come up um as we proceed. Walter?
Okay, um, I think we were, I was at, uh, so Ms. Beam had uh expressed concern about refuse. I I expect um that we'll receive a lot of feedback and there'll be modifications and improvements that we can make to the plan. I just wanna relay that I think we do have at least a a an area that's available for an additional refuse area. Um, we do have a detention basin o- on site. I'm now referring to page four thirteen, which is the grading plan. It's located along the southern portion of the site, which is adjacent to the commercial use. Um, the the detention basin collects the site, the the runoff from the site. There's also some stormwater management, uh, excuse me, some stormwater uh water quality measures that are in here as well. Um, this discharges to an area outside of the wetlands along an overland flow and then would eventually make its way into um the wetlands.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? I was looking at the elevations earlier. How much fill are you gonna have to fill in this? To to make this possible?
I I I don't have a a total quantity for you, that that's a complicated calculation.
I've already calculated it, but
Okay, then, you wanna tell me then, I I'm I'm sure, I know you're in the business.
Not up to me to to do this, but I can tell you right now, that's a lot of fill.
Well, with this use, we have to, this ha- th- these buildings have to be flat, so um, to answer your question a little bit more generically, the finished floor of the buildings is seventy four and a half. And we have an existing spot grade of sixty seven and a half, so you have, you know, you have approximately, you know, seven feet of fill there.
Just for the building footprint, you're forty nine thousand square feet.
Right.
Calculations of seven feet, that that that's a lot of fill. And and to to even make it possible, and then you're gonna have to fill for your your detention basins, am I correct?
Uh, well, the detentions of basins will be cut, the fill will will come up from the detention basin to meet the proposed grade.
No way.
I'm sorry?
No way.
I'm I'm not sure what you mean no way to.
There there's, i- i- if you look at the size of the detention basins, you calculate that fill. You're gonna be importing fill to this site.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt, I'm sorry if I, if if I misunderstood or misrepresented, here's the detention basin.
I understand. I, that's what I am understanding, but but, you know, there's a lot of fill just to make this happen. You've got a lot of fill that's gonna be hauled in here.
Yes, so Mr. Chair, if I could maybe clarify that a little bit too, so uh, the basin as being currently shown right there in in that um screenshot. The bottom of the basin for the detention is at sixty six, the approximate grade there is at sixty eight, so you will have for the bottom of the basin, two feet of fill. But as you go north on paper space here towards the site where the pavement is, you know, you're going up seven feet, so the site is getting filled on that slope. And then also on the south side, when we're talking paper space here to the bottom of the page, they are raising the site to create a berm. You know, that is um, you know, for buffering purposes within the fifty foot buffer that's required to the southerly property line there. Because uh although that does in uh contain a commercial use, it is residentially zoned, so they do require a buffer there. So I mean, it is fill on the south side there, but it is to create the berm to, you know, um, you know, try to comply with the buffer ordinance. But generally throughout the site, as Mr. as Mr. Hopkins testified to, you know, you're s- seven and a half, six and a half feet of of fill throughout the site. That's pretty significant, and then just doubling back on the point with the buffer being required along the southerly property line. Um, the discharge for the basin, so the discharge and the scour for that is, while it's outside of the basin, the contours and the grading for that discharge to get to that area of of wetlands or isolated wetlands to the south um, is within the buffer, and as you know, the board, uh, I think our ordinance doesn't allow for grading within a buffer. Um, there, there might be some tolerances for that when you're creating birmingham to create the buffer. But for grading for stormwater management, I I would say that that does not meet the intensive buffer uh ordinance. And then just clarifying, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth with with Walt and and my office regarding the stormwater management. Um, you know, I had questions on whether they had filed their uh general permit with DEP for the wet wetlands fill and whether that would trigger stormwater management review. While you guys submitted prior to the new rules and were deemed complete on their end, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so so this site, I I can say as a whole, I just wanna put on the record, if this was submitted after March second twenty twenty one, you'd be looking at a lot different site from green infrastructure perspective and things like that. They have provided detention basin to uh buyer retention basins on the south side of property. Um, the detention basin, they have test pits which show the separation's fine. Um, I had questions from Mr. Hopkins' office regarding the buyer retention basin regarding groundwater mounding. Um, what they provided to me conceptually, um, looks appropriate at this point. Having said that, they haven't actually provided any test pits for that area. So, you know, I can't tell you for a matter of it, you know, without a shadow of a doubt that you know, seasonal high water table has the appropriate separation or that, you know, the infiltration rates are suitable for for a buyer retention basin there. Um, you know, so regardless of how this board acts, that's something that's gonna need to be clarified before this any you know, gets it gets to any point of like construction or or approvals, um, you know, from my end on an engineering perspective. But I just wanted to bring that up for the board.
So, so let's just be hon- let's just be straightforward here, we did provide soil logs in the area, you you requested additional ones, so I don't think it's
There is one at the southern portion, uh, or sorry, eastern portion of that rain garden there, it's SL one thousand. However, the buyer retention basin, you have two there that that extend westerly. And the grade goes up considerably, you know, over that span, and there's no infiltration or total test pits. You know, as you go west where those basins are, so you know, hypothetically and conceptually, what you provided indicates that, you know, things will work. I've just wanted to point out for the board, I haven't had actual soil test pits for that, so, you know. Yes, it looks good in paper, but you know, I don't have definitive, you know, proof on it at this point, so.
Not to mention that it's in the buffer, right, Charlie? I mean.
So, so the basins are not, it's the
And the, the grading leading to
The discharge.
Yes. So, I mean, we have, and of course, this is ultimately up to the board, but we have pretty consistently not allowed, especially on a use variance application in a residential zone. A on a variance to be given to allow additional grading and drainage in a buffer. Um, so my question is, if you reduce the scope of the project, could you pull the basin back and pull all of that out of the fifty feet?
Uh, I I don't know, I haven't uh explored that yet, and uh I certainly know the history of the board and their um respect for buffers. And not that I wanna contradict you, but I just want to add that this is along the southern portion of the site, which is adjacent to a commercial use.
So I wanna just direct your attention to our ordinance, section one eighty eight dash sixty three A. That says separating a non-residential use from either a residential use or residential zoning district. And let me be very clear, that site to your south is in an ARE two, that's a residential zoning district. So should that non-conformity go away at some point, which is planning one oh one, is to make things less non-conforming and to be conforming with the underlying zoning, which is large lot residential. The the, you know, we would be remiss, should we not evaluate the potential for the buffer there? Because once you're there, you're there, so while, yeah, it's commercial now, doesn't mean it's gonna be commercial always, and the zoning requires very clearly in that section residential use or zone, and you're in an ARE two zone.
I do, I don't disagree with anything you said.
Okay, I just wanna, and I'm just, you know, I'm I'm putting it on the record, I know that Ms. Cuffone is listening intently and I'm sure anxiously awaiting her opportunity to testify, but, you know, it's all gonna factor into things like particular suitability. If there are requests to deviate from things like buffering.
See, they als- also seventeen oh one, the the lot seventeen oh one, I know they're the owners and everything. But behind, uh, right there on their property line, basically totally surrounding their property. You know, i- you're gonna have elevations all the way up to seven feet. You know, what is the elevation of that property there, the existing elevation of seventeen oh one?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this would be where the least amount of fill would occur on the site. However, because of the berms, we're 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 adding a lot of, a lot of fill to accomplish your your buffer requirements.
I understand that, but but my where does the water drain from seventeen oh one? How is water gonna get out of there?
So we've directed it to a um, to an inlet to capture it and put it into our um detention basin uh, in this area or redirected and kept it part of the site, if as you can see here, seventeen oh one drains this way. The other kinda goes around the site and that will continue in that way. And and to answer your question, so the rear of the site, this is roughly seventy three, seventy four, and the finished floors are at seventy four and a half. So the finished floors are roughly, you know, they're they're on par with the rear of the site. There just will be, you know, not to mislead the board, there'll be a lot of fill in this area to accomplish your birmingham requirements.
So, Mr. Chair, and if I can just clarify that too, so as as Walt did mention, they are providing an E inlet which captures runoff from seventeen oh one, which is offsite, so, and they're not required to reduce those flows. Um, they just have to accommodate it for like, you know, the changes in the time of concentration, cause right now it's grass flow to a point of analysis. Now it's going into a pipe system, so, so they 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 are required to account for that. But along the northerly property line, I I had some questions and concerns regarding the flow of water from that property. There's the area wetlands line B up top there. Um, you know, I know there's nice flow arrows showing water and runoff to flow in an easterly direction, um, you know, around to the back of the site. But if you look at a lot of the contours there, there's, you know, sixty nine, and then there's a sixty eight. Um, there's some like low areas in there, you know, I have questions on whether or not that's gonna cause a ponding issue without actually regrading that area. And if that area does need to be regraded, it is a required buffer along the north of the property line. And I believe it's a fifty foot residential and Q farm buffer, cause I believe sixteen oh four is a Q farm there, so um, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed with the testimony on how are we gonna ensure there's no, you know, negative impacts from a stormwater perspective to adjacent properties with filling our site seven feet? And then how do we also uh comply with the buffer ordinance?
Though uh, there'll be approximately three hundred and seventy seven trees that will be removed as part of this. Um, two hundred and fifty two will be replaced on site, there'll be a hundred and thirteen shrubs dispersed throughout the site. Um, at this point, I'm gonna refer to the landscaping plan, we've, uh, I believe that we've um kind of maxed out as much as we can put on the site. Uh, we can try to accomplish more uh tree replacement on site. I think we've kinda done the best that we can trying to get to the landscape plan. Um, without going it, without taking trees down to put more back, cause there is some vegetation that we're we're leaving around the perimeter of the site. So I've kinda maxed out as much trees as we can put back. Um, so that would require contribution to your tree fund. Um, there are, excuse me, no foundation plantings in the fronts of the buildings. Um, that's by design operationally, they just, they don't survive well there. So uh, your ordinance does require foundation plantings, we put them along the sides as you can see. Uh, and what Ms. Spiro's office suggested, I I believe it was her office, was that we provide an example of what the the foundation plantings would look like. Count these number of plantings and disperse down throughout the site. So although we're not providing plantings along the frontage, uh, because the operationally, it doesn't make sense. Um, they are provided for on the site. I think we've talked a bit about the buffers, we've we've uh improved them a lot uh through uh the suggestions of your professionals. Uh, they're approximately five feet high in in the soil mounding uh, with an additional ten to twelve feet for the deciduous trees that we're putting on and six to eight feet for the evergreen or coniferous. Uh, there was a suggestion by at least one of your professionals that uh, we we lengthen the 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 birmingham uh along the frontage. And I can see where we could probably do a little bit better here, so as a condition of approval or on a revision, we could lengthen the berm along the frontage as long as uh it didn't uh conflict with any of Monmouth County's requirements. Uh, Squankum Yalla Brook Road is a county road or any site triangles. The site will be served by public water, uh, which will be brought into the site, uh, looped around the buildings. Uh, your fire official has requested uh a uh on-site fire hydrant, I believe generally in this area. Uh, we would accomplish that as he requested. There's also a fire hydrant along Squankum Yalla Brook Road that needs to be relocated uh in order to accomplish the the driveway access. Uh, he has a suggested location, and of course, we would uh comply with that, and I I believe that would uh address all of his comments.
What about spring flowers in the building?
Uh, well, the architect is going to be here, I don't know what the code requires or not, so I would just prefer to let him testify to that, if that's okay. Um, and then just, just to kinda orient the board as far as the scope of this project. Um, we we kinda truncated it because it is a long property. We are disturbing six point nine seven acres out of eighteen point five seven. So we're really only disturbing approximately thirty seven percent of the site. Now, that's because the majority, two thirds of the site is constrained by buffers and wetlands and conservation easements.
You have the percentage of the developable portion of the site that you're disturbing?
Uh, I don't have that with me, but I, it's it's the majority, without a doubt, vast majority.
Right, I mean, I think that the percentage is, and I agree, you couched it perfectly, you did not try to to mislead the board, but I just wanna the board to understand that of the developable portion of the site, you're talking about you know, ninety percent plus or minus of the site being disturbed.
I I I wouldn't disagree with that, um, that's, that's, I'm sure, accurate.
And Walt, if we could zoom in on this plan two to the retaining wall at the rear of the site two. So the retaining wall is in very close proximity to, there's a conservation easement line. Was that, that was required as part of the prior subdivision in oh four or oh six, creating the two lots that we talked about earlier? Is that accurate?
I I I'm not sure that is, it has something to do with a, with a, with a, um I I don't know the the history of that, but that conservation easement line i- i- exists.
That's not associated with the flood hazard area or anything like that at the time of that subdivision for Marshville Grove?
Hazard area existed in two thousand and six, there there was a permit for utility company where there was some flood hazard mitigation that we think it was tru- it was linked back to. Um, but regardless, we are, it it does exist on the site and we are staying away from it, and I think your point is that we're close to it.
Yeah, and and the wetlands buffer too, and I I just, you know, have general questions for you on on whether you think what's being shown can be physically constructed without disturbing the conservation easement and the wetlands buffer.
Well, I I I, I wouldn't show it on our plans if I didn't think we could have constructed. Um, the, you know, to to, just to clarify with the board, the 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 way that these are constructed is you start, um, the the conservation easement and that area is lower than what we're doing. So the wall goes up and it extends away from the conservation easement, not into it. And the tiebacks would go away from the conservation easement, not into it. So uh, I I do believe that it's 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 easily constructed.
The applicant would agree to a condition that the regulated areas will not be disturbed with the proposed construction activities?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it would be typical, especially in how for us to put up some sort of fencing in in these protected areas um, prior to construction, and we would agree to that.
All right.
Would you be willing to put a split rail fence along that conservation easement to just demarcate it regardless?
Yeah.
I mean, Jen, at that point, I would almost say the conservation easement line and the wetlands buffer along the back there, cause they they kinda don't.
Yeah, whichever is, whichever is far Yeah, whichever is, whichever is farthest to the west, the most representative. I would, yes, I agree. So I see what you're saying, because the conservation easement line then gets overlapped by the wetlands. But I would say whatever that, yes, exactly, that area, just to make it abundantly clear. Because we have had experiences where, you know, this is actually proposed to be paved. But, you know, we've had experiences where things tend to creep. And we'd like to make it abundantly clear, should the board act favorably, that this is, this is the line.
It's something easy for us to do functionally. It will be seven or eight feet below the road, so it, it, but we're more than happy to do that. I'm sorry, go ahead. So, at this point, I, I basically concluded my testimony as far as the engineering. There are some waivers or relief that have to do with engineering that I could discuss. I could, I could take questions from the board, however, Mr. Chairman, you'd like.
Before you go there, now, how is, is this, I know you said it's public water. Now, is this sewer also?
I'm sorry, I, I did leave that out. There's, there's a septic system that's proposed for this as well.
There is a septic system.
Yes, in this area along here.
So, Mr. Chair, to clarify that too, the grading for the septic system does extend partially into the, the buffer, the residential buffer along the southerly property line as well.
There, there's not sewers here?
So there, there are sewers way in the back of this property. That we've had some preliminary discussions with the town and there, because of this conservation easement. I'm not sure, I think Mr. Alferi's office actually investigated this, that we're able to, to access it. Environmentally, it would require permits and then violating that conservation easement, I think presents other legal challenges. So ironically sewer is on the site and it, it's a, it's a MRSA interceptor line. So it's not just a standard line that, that can be connected to.
It's a forced main.
I don't know that it's a forced main, but it's a large collector. That they, it's used for transmission of large volumes rather than to connect and serve.
Walter, would you go into the relief, both the variances? I know Christine will discuss the justifications, but can you summarize for the board where the relief is required, both from variance and the waiver point of view?
Sure, and I, there, there's, they're interspersed throughout the professionals' letters. So if I, I miss one, please, please bring it to my attention. Your ordinance requires curb and sidewalk along the roadway frontages. It, it's whatever the board's pleasure is, we have a hundred and eighty-one feet of frontage. There would be nothing to connect it to.
I'm gonna stop you. I want the sidewalk. I mean, at the end of the day, we keep waving sidewalk everywhere and then we'll never get a connected sidewalk system. You know, this is a residential area, there are schools close by, there should be sidewalk. And, and that's gonna be my position on every application in this immediate vicinity. You know, so it's totally up to the board, but my recommendation is, is that the applicant provides sidewalks.
Okay, hear you loud and clear. There's, there's, your ordinance requires curb and sidewalk from the site to a public sidewalk. So now that, if the board follows Ms. Beam's suggestion, we do provide sidewalk along Squonkum Yellowbrook Road. The suggestion is that we connect this site to it. Again, I, I would respectfully request that the board consider a waiver in this condition in, in this instance. Because I don't know from a safety and security standpoint that we want to encourage the general public to walk onto the site. We do have sidewalks for internal circulation, just we wouldn't want to encourage the general public to walk onto the site. Impervious, I think we touched on a little bit before. Your ordinance in the ARE two zone, which is obviously residential zone, requires fifteen percent maximum impervious coverage. We are proposing seventeen, we're just a little bit above that. The SED zone, which we are also in, but for comparison and for commercial purposes, requires seventy percent. So we do require a, a, a relief from that, from the required fifteen to seventeen. Birmingham along the frontage, I think one or several of your professionals identified that as a potential relief. I would just submit to the board that we, we could accomplish that and, no longer request relief for that if we were able to lengthen the berms along the frontage. The foundation plantings, your ordinance requires foundation plantings. I think I went into that briefly before. We are not providing them along the frontages of the buildings themselves. However, that, that plant material is being dispersed throughout the site. So we're requesting a waiver, but we're still providing the plant material. Your ordinance requires a submission to the utility department. And we would just ask that that be deferred, especially since this is a use variance, until the board acts hopefully favorably upon this. And we can make that a condition of approval. There was also some minor, I think, details that Mr. Cunliffe's office required for submission waivers. A, a detail or information that needed to be added to the key map. Two thousand foot downstream analysis, which I believe may be in our report, but if not, we can, we can provide it to Mr. Cunliffe's office. And the Board of Health, of course, we would need to provide the Board of Health's approval for the septic system. So again, just because this is a use variance, we just respectfully request that the board not necessarily waive those, but just grant them as a temporary waiver and that they be made a condition of approval.
So Walt, I just wanna clarify for the board too. So we cited in our letter and kinda deferred to Sherry. So I think graphically on the plan, there's the fifty-foot buffer shown along the south, the west, the north. And the west adjacent to lot seventeen oh one. We cited it for still needing like relief, technical relief from the, requirements of like the birmingham and the plantings and everything like that. While you are proposing it, the ordinance does require a fifty-foot width. I think in a lot of those areas, you're proposing to utilize existing vegetation, you know, for partial width of that buffer. So I would just defer to Sherry to make sure that what's being proposed and what's existing is both adequate to meet the, the intent of, of the ordinance for that.
And I would say even, before Sherry jumps in, even if she finds, you know, some of the property lines to have what she would consider adequate, I still go back to the fact that, you know, there are certain elements within that fifty feet that would still require the relief regardless. So they do still require that relief.
Yeah, I mean, Jen's right on that. I did have some concerns along, like Charlie said, the north side on paper. Getting all those trees in and what is currently existing there. I do think they provided a note that they're going to try and work and field locate as much as they can over there. You know, as Mr. Hopkins said, you can't fit anything additional over there. But I would like to keep what is in that area. So it certainly doesn't seem worth it to take it out to the property line. They probably could also add additional trees if the board would prefer along the south side here. There is room to add additional evergreens to make it a fuller buffer. They definitely beefed up the buffer towards the north side.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, I think unless the professionals found that I've missed one of the, or more of the, the relief that's required. I think that concludes what I have. I'm more than happy to answer any questions from you, the professionals. If you wanna go through the letters, I think, I can, I, I know that I can say that I, I, I believe I've touched on all of the items that need to be addressed. If there's anything specifically that the professionals need me to address, I will.
You, you do have to, I don't think you mentioned about the waiver to pay into the tree fund. You do have to ask for that.
Okay, so I'm not sure, quite sure how that goes. We do recognize that if we do not replace on site, that we have to contribute. If I wasn't clear about that, then I, then, then I would like to state that now. If that requires a relief to ask for that substitution, then I guess that's technically what we're, we're asking for.
Yeah, so that would require a waiver. And also I see on this plan that you have a, what does it say? Four point eight acres are being cleared, I think. On the right side of the page, it says four point one. So if you could just clarify, or maybe it's a different sheet I have. I have another sheet that's, yeah, up there, item ten. Or no, it says higher up in there. Item two says four point one. But in the middle of your sheet, it says four point eight.
Okay.
Yeah, just, that needs to just be calculated.
Alright, thank you for catching that. We'll, we'll clarify and it is what it is and we'll demonstrate it to your office.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, I had a number of items in my letter regarding the stormwater management. I can represent to you that Mr. Hopkins' office did circulate an informal draft of revisions. A lot of it was, you know, some inverts on pipes and things like that did not correspond, or the outlet control structures didn't correspond to the report. And, you know, the bulk majority have the, of those items have been addressed or I'm satisfied, you know, satisfied that they can be addressed as a condition of the approval if the board rules favorably. The big item that I, that I noted obviously was with the, the two rain gardens. Obviously not having any soil test pits with that. Obviously, if we had that, I could give you more of a form answer on that. You know, if water table was an issue and if infiltration was an issue there, you know, could you, could they put underground infiltration elsewhere on the site underneath parking areas without changing the site layout potentially? But, you know, I really couldn't tell you with, without seeing that information. And then I also had some questions about like, you know, just details being clarified. You know, there's a manufactured treatment device, but there's no actual sizing of calculations provided on the plans for the water quality storm. So a lot of technical things that just need to be clarified on the applicants' end, you know, before any like site plan approval. You know, goes forward this, if this board was inclined to rule favorably on the application and the use. My recommendation would be nothing past preliminary, just because there's, I think, a lot of things that need to be cleaned up. You know, informationally on the site with, with that, with that design.
Yeah, Mr. Cunliffe's office has been very accommodating working with us on that. And, and he expressed that to me prior, well, prior to the meeting, and I appreciate that. There are, we're confident that our design would work, but I understand his and the board's concerns. So I, I can represent to you that I believe that this would work if we were to bring anything back that would, you know, deviate from the design. Certainly the board would have a second look at it. I think what Mr. Cunliffe was suggesting would be a two-step approach of preliminary and then come back for final and be really tight for final. And that's, that's certainly reasonable.
Jump in on that with what Charlie was mentioning, the rain gardens. They're not specifically called out on these plants, correct? I don't, I'm assuming you still have to put all the information on vegetation that would be going in there?
It, it's, there's actually a detail, we have a.
One detail, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we can work with you on that. You know, we call them rain gardens. DEP doesn't ever use that word. They call them bio-retention basins. So we may be using both in our documentation and that may cause confusion. But we, we can make sure that, that we have the proper vegetation in there. I think there were some comments in your letter about that.
Yeah.
Sherry, you're just looking for the landscaping plan to accurately reflect what's being proposed, not just some typical cross-section, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah, I mean, as it looks now, you know, there's no specific, you know, planting area that would, would, I, I would assume is a rain garden. So, yeah, those details should definitely be on there.
I think if you look at page ten, I think we have something a little bit more specific, but we can certainly tighten it up.
Tommy, just, just looking at this, you were saying having a high water table. You know, the, the detention base is going down two feet. You know, they, they're gonna excavate two feet of dirt. The rest of the site is gonna be seven feet high. You're gonna bring it, I, I, I'm gonna give you the numbers. It's approximately six hundred loads of film for this site. And, you know, you're gonna bring that, you're not gonna have a high water problem because you're, you're filling on top of the water.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm not talking about the central portion of the site where the main thirty-nine thousand square foot building.
Before the detention base, they're gonna have to bring fill in to create those detention basins.
Yeah, so to create the side slopes, yes, but the bottom of the basin and then also the bottom of the bio-retention basin. So, so with the bio-retention basins and, and Mr. Hopkins calls them, rain gardens. So the requirement for bio-retention basins is you have to typically have an eighteen-inch minimum like soil bed for the planting and your required separation from the bottom of that soil bed is two foot to seasonal high water table. So really from the bottom of your basin to seasonal high water table, you need to have three and a half feet of separation. Detention basins is different. You only need one foot of separation. So that's why I brought up like, there's a significant, the grade as you go west on this site, you know, increases drastically. You know, so without having test pits in that area, you know, I couldn't tell you without a shadow of a doubt that that is going to work. You know, conceptually what he's provided, you know, looks like it, it may. But like I said, without actually having test pits there, I, I, you know, I wouldn't be able to give you a final seal of approval on it.
You're, you're talking to two, two basins that are up by towards Squonkum, correct?
Yeah, right along the site driveway. So how, Mr., and Walt, you can correct me if this is wrong. How you have the site graded in the driveway, everything kinda sheet flows from the north to south on that driveway. And it'll be a depressed curve that overland flows into those rain gardens.
That's correct.
And then each one of those rain gardens are sized independently from one other for a certain water quality, stone volume. And then it overflows into the next and then ultimately overflows into the detention basin, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's those first two skinny basins, Mr. Chair, along the driveway that I'm talking about where there's no soil test pit. So conceptually what he's provided, you know, if you look at the other test pits on the site and you do an approximation of like, you know, if water table does follow the same elevation in the ground contours, could it conceivably work? Possibly, but I couldn't tell you definitively without having test pits for it.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm gonna open it to the board members. Do any of the board members have any questions with Mr. Hopkins?
I do, Mr. Chair. I have actually three questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I, I think, well, the first question, I think probably, Mr. Hopkins probably maybe will be covered later. And again, getting back to who's gonna be in here and the uses, would that be directed to you or should I wait till later?
I, I can tell you what I'm told. I think you might, you might wanna hear it from the, the applicant.
Okay, alright, that's fair. And only two other questions. Can you quickly go over again the surrounding uses and zones? I'm still, if you could do that, please.
Sure. To the north is single-family residential, uses and zoned. To the south is single-family residential, ARE two zoned. But there is a commercial, some sort of a warehouse use. To the east, which would be way on the other side of the two-thirds of the site we're not using. It's actually the railroad right-of-way. On the other side of the right-of-way is single-family residential, and then there's a large warehouse off of Sutherd. That's zoned SED. And to the west would be the other side of the street, which would be single-family residential. There's a large vacant lot, I'm not quite sure what's going on. And then your middle school is across the street to the west.
Okay, and then the property that, you know, that we're talking about is ARE and SED.
Correct, but to be, to be fair, all of the development is in, is in ARE two.
Okay, alright, cool. And then I guess the next one I'm getting itchy on here and Mr. Chair might be able to even clarify this for me. But it sounds, so what, what's gonna happen here with all this water if we're raising the seven feet? I know you engineered it, but can we quickly go over, you know, where all this water from this site's going? We have a Q farm to the north and houses to the, you know.
Sure, that's, that's a reasonable question. So we're, we're, we are, any water, so the whole, this whole area kinda drains to the rear because there's a stream and a wetland back there. So anything from this existing site that comes on to our site would either get captured and put into our stormwater management system, where we continue to flow along the, the, the side of the property to the wetlands and the stream. To the south, we're really not changing any of the grading there, so that would continue. All the water that's generated on site would be collected through a normal stormwater management system of inlets and pipes. Are piped to a, you know, detention basin, which outlets along here to the south. It's discharged into what's called a scour hole. It's discharged into what's called a scour hole. It's kind of like a little, small little rock depression where it fills up and then spills out into the, would eventually become the wetlands in the, in the stream.
Okay, all right, I thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
The other que- how tall is the wall in the back?
About seven feet.
Seven feet?
Yeah. A- a- at its highest, seven or eight feet at its highest.
Is there gonna be bollards or guardrail?
We do have guy rail, and we do have guy rail, yes. Well, do you know if that requires a fence also? Yeah, that's what I was hesitating on. We do have, we do have a fence and a guy rail. Belt, belt and suspenders.
Okay, anybody, any other board member have any questions of Mr. Hopkins?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hopkins, I'm looking at the parking spots. The ones that are closest to the building, are they the same size as like for the employees? Because with this scale, I can't tell if they're bigger or if they're the same.
So these are all nine by nineteen spaces. The ones here are the same sizes here. There are open areas here, and these are, these are the open areas where there'd be an overhead door where a, a truck can pull in, where it's a loading area.
Okay, now, one comment I do want to piggyback on what our, our planner said. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even consider this without having another refuge area because I, I mean, just having one, this is not gonna work. And I could see that being a big issue. So you'll make sure that gets corrected, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, Walt, I just want to clarify for the boards too. So the loading areas that you're saying that, you know, obviously, we're not providing anyone globally on the site, but you're utilizing these open areas where there's the garage doors for, for loading. For an SU forty truck, if those doors are, are closed, say it's, you know, a box truck making a delivery to a site and no one's there, are we gonna have trucks hanging out into the drive aisle? And how does that impact site circulation in the event of like an emergency, you know, situation?
Well, I, maybe I'll defer to the applicant, but I, I would think it would be unusual if there will be a delivery without somebody being there to receive it in this type of use. So I, I think the, the, my expectation, and we can have this confirmed later, would be that the door would be opened and that they would pull in.
So it's all gonna be controlled by the applicant, times of delivery, there's not gonna be stuff coming when it's not anticipated?
Let's let him talk about that. I don't think the applicant can control each ten, but he, he, he has experience on how these operate.
Yeah, I think. My concern about the hours of operation, that eight, eight o'clock to four-thirty, it just seems very unrealistic. So, you know, I, I did ask for that testimony, which I, I don't know, was in the plan that Sal had leading into this to begin with, but he did hear me. He said that the applicant was gonna testify, but I agree with you. I think that, you know, should you act favorably, and I'm not a hundred percent convinced that that's what the outcome of this is gonna be, but what I don't want to have happen is that we like load up an approval with a million conditions that are gonna be absolutely unenforceable. You know what I mean? Because, you know, this is a residential area, there's a school across the street, there's people that live nearby that are gonna be impacted by this one way or the, on another. And so I feel like these are very legitimate questions, and I do think you guys should be peppering them with these types of questions. But, you know, I just, you know, saying no deliveries before eight, which is great, except for we're not gonna have a, a police officer standing there. So we want to make sure that the conditions that we put on the, on this application, if it even gets to that point, are things that absolutely can be enforced, because otherwise, there's really no point.
I agree. Any, anyone else, any other board member wish to ask any questions? Mr. Sayah. Can, can we get the full screen?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions or comments from Mr. Hopkins?
No, I'm just having a hard time digesting this all.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Stanton.
I'm curious, are there gonna be any limitations to the size of the trucks that are being, that are used in the site? I know earlier, we were, we were told that the garage doors would accommodate trucks entering the building. Do we know how big the garage doors would be to allow what they would, what they would accommodate for?
I know that the, may, maybe we'll let the architect or the applicant discuss that. I know they're twelve feet wide. I don't have many more of the dimensions other than that.
Yeah, my only question was, I mean, you know, there's a difference between a nine-foot-tall garage door and what it'll accommodate and an eighteen-foot-tall garage door and what it would accommodate. So, you know, you.
Okay, that's a good point that I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I'm sure somebody here does.
I appreciate it.
To go along those lines and just to clarify, you know, as we go forward to something that's definitely needs to be clarified, because I think you alluded to the line share of traffic, it would be SU forty or smaller, but there is a possibility of W fifty, WB fifties coming onto the site from time to time. How often that occurs, you know, on a daily basis, how many are coming to the site? Whether the site driveway, I think you provided a circulation template at the driveway for SU forty, but I don't know if you provided anything for a tractor-trailer. But how frequently that occurs and whether the site can accommodate that, I think, needs to be thoroughly presented to the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rusko?
No, no question.
Okay, I think we covered everybody. Did I leave anybody out?
Hey, Charlie?
Yes.
That's Mr. Sayah.
There's two buildings. Twenty-four, twenty-four smaller roller curtain doors? And what about the six on the standalone building? What are, what are the size of those roller curtain doors? Are they taller buildings? I haven't seen anything that makes me believe that this is not an enormous intensity use of the site.
So I, I think that's something that can be discussed, and maybe when their architect gets up, he can give us more information. You know, I'm assuming he's gonna pull up the plan for each of those buildings and show what's being proposed as far as the door heights and what type of vehicles they think that can fit in there. And then obviously, what's, you know, what's, what can be accommodated in, in each building? And also what the architectural makeup is. I'm sure Jen's gonna have questions and comments for the architectural makeup. I think we can, we can get that answered when the architect comes up.
Right, and we're gonna call the architect next when we get to that, that point.
Okay. Nothing else for Mr. Hopkins? Okay, Mr. Alfieri?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, board. I'll still be available whenever you need anything.
Yeah, we've still gotta open the public.
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay.
The next witness is Scott Roth, our architect, who you swore, Mr. Tocoli swore in earlier. That.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Hi. Well, be, before you say anything, we, you were sworn in, but we'd like you to place your credentials on the record, please.
Registered architect in the state of New Jersey, bachelor of architecture from Drexel University. Been registered for twenty-eight years and president of Roth Architects for twenty-one New Jersey, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Indiana, and Michigan. I do a prime, a lot of work in New Jersey.
Okay, we accept your credentials, sir.
And, and Mr. Roth, your office prepared the architectural plans that were submitted in support of this application?
Yes, we did.
I have marked as A thirteen on the exhibit list, the architectural plans, which were originally dated January twenty-eighth and last revised, revised April twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one. Is that the plan that you're gonna be testifying to?
That's correct.
All right, and are you able to put that plan up on the screen?
I sure hope so. Let me give it a shot. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just give you an overview of what these structures are, and I hope that it answers a lot of the scale and massing questions that were just brought up. The first building is a twenty-four unit before units, and the height of this building at its peak is twenty-three feet. And at the soffit, where you see the fronts where the garage doors are, is seventeen foot six. So it's a building.
You're cutting in and out, Scott.
I'm sorry. It's a, the, the peak of this twenty-four unit building is twenty-three feet, the highest point. At the front of the building is seventeen foot six. It's a steel structure, and it will have sprinklers. All buildings will be sprinkled. The exterior concrete split block and vertical seamed metal panels with metal, metal roofs, pent roofs over pretty much all sides. Colors seem to earth tones, more rustic, not to stand out. Would like to point out that these buildings are set back from the road with quite a bit of distance. The first large building is
Wait, you cut, you cut out again.
Ah, sorry about that. I don't know what's happening. The first building at twenty-four feet, or twenty-four units, is approximately four hundred and fifty feet or more. Code. And the smaller six-unit building is approximately six hundred feet or more from the road. So between the scale of the building being low-profile and to kind of blend into the site. The garage doors that we just talked about, they are twelve feet wide by fourteen feet tall. So that.
Yeah, wait, say that again, because you cut out. You escaped the dimension of the doors, but then we lost you.
The dimensions are twelve feet wide by fourteen feet tall. And that should SU forty truck, which is about twelve feet tall itself. I'll let the applicant discuss more about the delivery system. But again, we wanted things to be lower in scale, warm colors, rustic colors, not to stand out. And with all the landscape offering that the land planner is proposing, to kind of tough this in, into this site. I'll switch.
Wait.
Sal, I'm hearing like every tenth word.
Oh, I know. Scott, we're, we're, you're cutting in and out, so I don't know how to fix that.
I'm losing the majority of what he's saying.
Right, well, we could, I, I, again, I don't know, Scott, how, where you are, how we fix that. We could try and move on to another witness and see if we could figure out what's wrong. I'm the last person to give technological advice, I can tell you that.
Hey, hold on a second.
He might be able to mute his computer and just call in and speak that way.
Mr. Chairman, maybe it would be an appropriate time to take a break and let Sal speak with his witness and, you know, possibly, you know, resolve the technical glitch rather than break the testimony up with another witness.
Okay. At this time, we'll, we'll take a ten-minute break.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The board is gonna take a recess. They'll be back at eight thirty-seven. The board is ready to reconvene.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Roth, would you bring back up the, the elevations on A thirteen, A thirteen and run through that again, please?
Sure. So everyone can see the rendering?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the unit building. The height of the ridge at its highest peak is twenty-three feet. The height at the soffit at the front of the building.
You're breaking up again. Mr. Roth, are you there?
I, I don't know what to do.
I don't know either.
Do you have a landline?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Well, let's try one more time, and if not, then we're gonna have to move on. We can't spend, we'll have to figure out a way to get this addressed at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. The height of the building is twenty foot, or twenty-three feet to the ridge. Okay? The garage doors by fourteen feet tall. So.
I only caught half of that.
Right. Okay, obviously, we're not gonna be able to get through your testimony, uh, Mr. Roth, for what, for whatever the technical issue is. Uh, Mr. Chair, can I suggest that we move on to the next witness?
Uh, Mr. Trump, I'm gonna ask Mr. Tropoli to step in.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, for the benefit of the members and the public, we need to have clear testimony. So why don't we excuse Mr. Roth at this time? And Sal, I don't know whether or not you will be in a position to have him come back on later tonight. I don't know, but let's proceed with another witness, and we'll just call the testimony at this point incomplete and to be resumed at a later point, either tonight or at another time. So your next witness, Sal, would be appropriate at this time.
Okay, Andrew Werbler is the next witness, and he I have to give you his number unless, bear with me.
Right, and he'll need to be sworn when we finally bring him in.
Correct. He's, it might be seven-three-two-five-four-seven, the oh-three-hundred. Do you see that one?
I think he's in here, Mr. Alfieri. Andrew's in there, he's waving.
Oh, okay. Andrew Werbler.
Are you ready to proceed, Mr. Alfieri? I'll swear him in.
I'm, I'm not sure if he's in. Andrew, are you in?
He's there.
I'm here.
Okay, fine. And Mr. Werbler, you're gonna be, to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Werbler, right hand, please. Your swear word affirmed that the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, and your name for the record, please?
Andrew Werbler, W E R B L E R.
Your witness, Mr. Alfieri.
Mr. Werbler, what is your relationship to the applicant?
Uh, I'm a member of the applicant, Brookstone at Casola Farm LLC.
And what is the relationship of that entity to this property, property owner or contract purchaser?
Contract purchaser to the property.
All right, and you're familiar with the proposed operation of the site? And you've been listening to some of the questions that came up during the course of the earlier testimony?
Uh, yes, I am, and yes, I have been.
Okay, so can you describe for the board the type of users that you expect to be tenants in this location, if approved?
Um, from fielding interest, on the market, we anticipate a mix of users. I know contractors certainly was mentioned, and we do anticipate interest from contractors. We anticipate some users that, you know, frankly, are finding it no longer necessary to operate a retail frontage, you know, like in a, a retail strip mall on Route Nine, because they're doing most of their operations now online. So they would prefer a, a small storage area with an office to operate out of. You know, and then just miscellaneous service businesses. That's, that type of thing. It's, we really anticipate a mix.
The the types of vehicles that you anticipate visiting the site during the course of normal business operations. Are you in a position to describe the types of vehicles and are you in a position also to limit the size or type of vehicles?
Just because of the limited size of the individual tenant units, we really don't anticipate large tractor trailers. I know that came up earlier in the discussion. I mean, can I guarantee it? I, I can't. I mean, I, I don't know for a fact, but you know, in, in our experience, a, if a contractor gets a delivery, it is coming on a box truck. I know fleet vehicles was mentioned, um, you know, a pickup, a work truck or two for an individual user would be probably pretty ordinary.
Are you in a position to include in your lease a limitation on the number of vehicles that could be parked on the site? So that you, you don't have any situation where you have fleet vehicles for a specific user?
We would have to because of the, the, the discussion of the number of spaces. So, um, you know, to avoid any type of issues with, uh, for us to, to enforce. And we don't want vehicles parking on grass or along the, uh, along the curb. We would have to enforce that, do that, that calculation, whatever that may be, two or three spaces per unit and, and, and limit that in the leases, of course.
So, Sal, along those same lines with the applicant agree to obviously provide any fire lane striping and signage along all the interior driveways? And then would they be open to a title 39 enforcement on the site?
Yeah, yes, of course.
Yes. Will there be, will you allow heavy equipment to be stored and or operated on site?
No, that's not our plan. I mean, it's, we don't have room for it. We don't feel like it's, uh, you know, appearance wise that it's, it's a nice thing for this, you know, we're not a, we're not a yard. We don't anticipate any type of heavy equipment being stored there.
So if the board were to approve the application and impose, and impose that prohibition, you have no issue with that?
No issue.
Also, you heard Mr. Hopkins testify that there will be no outdoor storage of any material or equipment? And you would agree that that would be a condition of approval as well?
Yes.
Sal, on those lines, you're aware that the township just was successful in litigation where the outdoor parking of vehicles was considered outdoor storage, correct? Are you aware of that or not?
I'm not aware of that.
So going back to Mr. Werbler's testimony, if someone were to store his work trucks overnight, that's outdoor storage.
Okay.
So that would be relief that you would need in addition to the relief you've already sought through this application, or you have to commit that that's not going to happen, which I go back to the board with respect to, you know, it becomes an enforcement issue.
Right. So, um, I think, and, and I'm unaware of that, that decision or that litigation, Jen, but if the, but I believe you. So, Mr. Werbler, the question is, uh, we're going, you're going to want to have the board grant you the relief that you can have a certain number of vehicles parked overnight.
So the units do have a 12-foot by 14-foot overhead door. So it is possible for somebody to park their truck indoors. But my question to Ms. Beam would be, is that a variance then is a, if
Outdoor storage is not permitted. So if you're going to park vehicles overnight, you need a variance for it.
Okay, that's my question. I, we do have the ability to require the tenants to park inside.
So I guess you guys are going to have to decide whether it is you want to go for that relief or you're just going to acquiesce that they're going to be parked inside. But again, I go back to the board, that's going to require someone from the town to police the area to make sure that there's compliance with that requirement. I, 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 I understand the applicant's proposal a wholeheartedly. I just want the board to be aware that with every condition that we're imposing, it's going to put onus on the township to make sure that they're, that they're compliant. You know, a lot of these conditions are going to be difficult to enforce. So I just want that to be in the forefront of your mind.
And, and Mr. Werbler, the, uh, you heard the concern about the board planner about the hours of operation that Mr. Hopkins testified to. Can you provide a little more clarity as to exactly what you expect or what you're prepared to limit the hours of operation to?
Yeah, like Ms. Beam is correct, you know, for a typical contractor to, to show up at their shop and, and load up their vehicle for the day to do so before seven is not unusual. But in that case, uh, for the contractors that may be there, like you said, they're typically loading up and heading out for the day. So the eight to 4:30 was just kind of a, you know, a generic time period. And it's not all contractor spaces. So I can't commit to, you know, everybody's going to be there starting at 6:30. I can't commit to everybody being there at eight.
I mean, that's kind of problematic. Like you're asking for a use variance. And you're, and with the use variance comes the negative criteria, which is the impact of the surrounding land uses. Your engineer testified under oath that the hours of operation, which I'm assuming he got from you, was eight to 4:30. Now you're saying you're not sure when, you can't control it, we don't know. And so that's problematic from a use variance standpoint. You're not going to be giving carte blanche to come and go on the site as you decide and as you tend it up. Perhaps you should get a list of tenants lined up before you come back. But again, I want to reiterate, you're in a residential zone. You're in a commercial zone. This would be a very different conversation. But your test, your applicant's engineer testified eight to 4:30. Now you're saying, eh, it could be before 7:30. We don't know. We're not sure. That's not good enough. So you're going to have to figure it out and you're going to have to testify. And you're going to have to give us some assurances on how this is going to operate. You're asking for a D1 use variance here. So it, there's not going to be a lot of wishy-washy flexibility. You're going to have to really come to the table with an actual answer. And then the board's going to have to decide whether that's okay or not. But
I'm just being honest. I don't want to commit to something that's not true.
It's not, what you've answered is not satisfactory. You're going to have to come up with an answer.
Understood. I, I don't have any tenants committed, which is why I can't give you a fixed answer. You know, I don't even have an approval. This is all kind of in planning. So if I had a, a written commitment from a tenant, I would give you all the details I, I, I could, but I don't.
Mr. Alfieri, I don't really know what else I can say on the matter. And I have, I feel very badly for your professional coming up later because she's going to have to justify all this. And based on this, I don't see how it's possible.
Understood. And I understand, Mr. Werbler, if we're not in a position to commit to a, a fixed hours of operation, then we're going to have to come back and commit at some other date because it is a use variance and a resolution of approval. If granted, we'll have specific hours of operation in it.
I don't have a problem committing if, I mean, if the board has a preference for what they think is appropriate.
We have to propose
I'm open to enforcing that because I, I do have a management team to enforce it.
So we should, you should propose what you think is realistic for your tenant mix and then the, that you think you're going to get. And then the board will consider that when it, when it votes.
Okay.
So are you in a position to give us a, a realistic timeframe for business?
Again, if, if a contractor starts at 6:30 is not unheard of, so 6:30 to 4:30, and I could commit to that.
Okay.
What about Saturdays, Sundays?
Unlikely, but Saturdays typically people do, uh, half-days. I mean, and typically not first thing in the morning. So on Saturday, nothing before nine.
Again, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I've seen contractors working seven days a week. So if they're working for themselves, they're going to work when they can. And you just kind of haphazardly throwing out hours of operation, which the town is then going to be put in a position to have to enforce. I, I, I'm not going to lie. I, I'm very concerned about the application. And when we get to that point, I'm going to go through the issues for the board and they can ultimately make whatever decision they want to make. But, you know, this is not a new application. This has been like milling around for quite some time. So I'm concerned that, we're here, we are in August when this has been going on forever. And Charlie alluded to it earlier that you were in, in advance of the stormwater regs, which was, you know, in the winter. So the fact that you still don't have answers to these questions is concerning to me. And again, I go back to a warehouse type use, flex space, whatever you want to call it, in a residential zone, which from the township's perspective is not a beloved land use. So you're going to have to come to the table with something a little bit more concrete. And the way it's being presented to me right now, I'm just going to say to the board, I have serious concerns.
Understood.
Okay, um.
And Sal, just to kind of, sorry not to cut you off to piggyback on that too. So I think as far as the use, I think we're looking for, uh, I think would be beneficial from this board's perspective. If, if the board does real favorably, we need to like know specifically like certain uses that are prohibited in the future. You know, while the site may accommodate it from a parking perspective in the future, we just want to have a baseline. If this does get approved, you know, applicant wants to put a tenant in one of these spaces that doesn't really fit with what was kind of provided at the testimony, you know, um, they would potentially have to come back to the board. So we're just looking for a more comprehensive of like what's being proposed. So we have a baseline to go from and, and kind of, I know there was an allusion to, um, some box stores or retail stores where you don't really need the footprint. So now you kind of want to move into a warehouse. So I'd have questions on, um, you know, if it's just a solely e-commerce, you know, how much traffic is generated that with like deliveries to and from the site and how that impacts the traffic testimony while, when we get to Mr. Ray, that, that'll need to be clarified.
So machine shop, you know, is that going to be a, a thing that's going to go in? Is there going to be a machine shop?
So we've had, Mr. Chair, we've had in a number of these coming where applicants agreed to like no assembly, no manufacturing. You know, the long list of, of items that were specifically, you know, would not be permitted, uh, you know, in the future. So I think we're looking for things along the lines of that.
Charlie. Charlie. Those were pre-existing conditions or uses? And they were properly zoned? Or they were properly zoned at that time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so to clarify that, that would be in instances where, uh, in the SCD where you're allowed to have multi-tenant structures. They just needed a variance because they didn't have the minimum tenant space or something like that. The board has permitted certain uses and then restricted certain uses. This is just straightforward. These uses are not permitted in the zone. So I think we're just looking, what they're asking for to, that's not permitted in the zone, just more details on what it is. And then just going forward, specifically stating what they're not going to ever anticipate coming on the site. Just so we, we know for sure, you know, as tenants come and go, it gives a baseline for the code enforcement, for the zoning officer, for issues to the CO to make sure, you know, um, what's going in there is in line with any board, you know, potential board approval.
Right. And not only that, none, no uses are, no commercial uses are permitted in that zone anyway. So.
Uh, Charlie and Jen, question for you. And I, I'm hearing loud and clear the limitations of conditions in a resolution and the enforcement of it. What I'm thinking about is that there should be some sort of an operations schedule or an operations manual. In other words, how this, how this facility is going to be operated, which would encompass the concerns that you have, Jen, with regard to the hours and the concerns that Charlie has with the types of users, so that we have something in black and white that can be an exhibit rather than a generic condition of approval that I would put in a resolution. We've had problems and really you shouldn't, when you're talking about use variances, we shouldn't be putting condition upon condition, particularly where we have enforcement issues. So, you know, Sal, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm just trying to be practical, you know, for your client's benefit. I think an operations statement of some sort might really go a long way towards resolving the concerns that the board professionals have. Again, just my, uh, my
Right. We agree. Um, we, we've already communicated internally here through text messages that we're definitely not finishing tonight. And we're going to come back with a written operations statement that hopefully addresses all these comments. We're hopeful that after Mr. Werbler's testimony, and obviously he's going to have to come back and finish his testimony at a later date, that, um, our architect logged off and logged in and we were going to see if we can get to him. And then we were going to ask that the board carry the application. Mr. Ray won't be able to testify because until we have the operations clear, his testimony may have some holes in it. And then obviously planning can't go until everybody's finished.
That's understandable, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I agree. So I, well, technically, Mr. Alfieri, I don't, I don't think Mr. Werbler can add anything until we know what the operation is going to be.
Yes.
You know, I, I think we ought to move right to Mr. Roth.
That's fine. Um, I think he's going to log off and log right back in now that we're getting to him. And then, um, we'll see how that works. And if it works, we'll finish him hopefully. If not, we'll have to adjourn and come back.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jim Moretti?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moretti.
I'm just wondering, the hours of operation, are they going to conflict with the hours of operation of Middle School North?
Well, we, we don't know what the hours of operation were.
Right. Well, I'm just saying to keep that in mind because I think the hours of operation, Middle School North is 7:30 in the morning to 2 o'clock. So that means the buses are coming up at that time. And if he's having a lot of movement in his area, just, just curious, that's all.
Yep. Right, right now, we really don't know what the hours of operation would be.
Well, I'm just saying for him to keep that in mind in his decision-making.
I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Ray is listening quite intently to all of this. Thank you.
I see Mr. Roth has logged back in.
Can, can anyone hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
Okay, maybe that did it.
We're going to find out.
Okay.
So, Mr. Roth, you were sworn in and qualified and we've attempted to get your testimony on a couple of times. We're going to go back to A13, which is the, your architectural plans last revised April 21st, 2021. And we're going to try to discuss now your building elevations, please.
Okay. So what you're looking at here is a 24-unit building. And the highest point of the ridge is 23 feet. And the highest point at the soffit is 17 foot 6 inches. It's a steel building with split face block and vertical metal seam panels with, um, metal pent roofs on all the sides. And the garage doors are 12 feet by 14 feet high. We, we, uh, Andrew talked about that already, which would fit a, a car or truck inside. We tried to keep the color scheme more warm tone, rustic, and keep the scale of the building down low. This building is approximately 450 feet or more off the road. And the six-unit building that's off to the right is probably about 600 feet off the road. So between the scale of the building and the color scheme, we really just wanted to have these muted into the site. I'll show you a floor plan.
Wait, Mr. Roth, before you move off that, the, the other, all their building will have the same architectural size and design?
Yes. I mean, it's a smaller building, but its scale is, uh, the height of, the height of the smaller building is 20 feet versus 23 feet. So it's a little, little smaller. Uh, the soffit height is the same and the garage doors are the same.
And you also indicated previously, but again, since we're starting over, these buildings will be fully sprinkled?
Yes, they're steel structure, fully sprinkled buildings. Steel skin and, and concrete block.
And, and you, while we're still on the elevations, the, the township ordinance has specific sections, sections about breaking up the wall and the articulations, et cetera. You've, you've, you've reviewed those ordinances and you believe we comply with the ordinance requirements?
We, we, we've reviewed them. We've discussed them with Jen and we've attempted to break them up both with color scheme, both with material, both with the pent roofs that are on the fronts and the sides.
The only question I would have with regard to that, Sal, is that end elevation that I'm seeing and the trees that you have, that's just for graphic detail of your architecture, correct? That's not the landscaping plan in, included in the
Correct. It's an artist rendering. Um, those particular trees were, were on the landscape plan. I know a lot more has been added since this rendering was done. So you'd have to cross I know a lot more has been added since this rendering was done, so you'd have to cross-reference this with the landscape plan.
Right, so I would just request at the end of this, not in anticipation of the subsequent meeting, because I do agree, we've gone back and forth about this. Um, but I just would say for the file at the end of this, should the board act favorably, that it be reconciled with the landscaping plan, so that if someone were to pull the file specifically along that facade, we would see exactly what we're going to be dealing with.
Sure, sure, no problem.
Okay, um, please go to the floor plan now.
Okay. Uh, this exhibit is the larger building, the twenty-four unit building, and you can see it in, in two dimension now, the elevation. Uh, again, the twenty-three feet to the highest point, the split face block finish that is broken up with, uh, metal panels, metal pent roof. And you can see that all sides of the building get the articulation the same, it does have the pent roof even on the sides and the rear. This typical unit space, which was discussed before, uh, is basically open warehouse, does have a small office, approximately twelve by sixteen feet, and a toilet room, which is ADA accessible. This is the smaller building, the six unit building, and you can see the detailing is the same, uh, although the roof is a little lower, it's at twenty feet to the peak, but all the other elements are there that are on the twenty-four unit building.
Sal, will any of these units have individual signs? For the tenants, and then is there any site signage or ID signage or directional signage proposed?
Okay, um, Scott, are you, are you familiar with the, the building elevation signage?
I don't know, that's really a question for Andrew on how he attempts to do signage there.
I think when we come back, that needs to be clarified, Sal, just so we know what's being contemplated for relief.
Will do.
Also, if it's going to, if the sign, if there are signs in each individual tenant, are they going to be lit signs, or? Yeah, they're going to have.
We'll get you, we'll get you, um, facade signage details certainly, if they're proposed before the next meeting.
Sal, this is really a site that you're encouraging the public to come to, correct? This is more kind of like for people to utilize as like additional space for their business?
Yes, for their businesses, yeah, not to, not to the general public, but.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, but so like, yeah, so I would not anticipate a lot of signage being necessary because that would also require relief if there's multiple sign, multiple facade signs, et cetera. So I would take a look at that before you come back.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to, we had an application where I think we spent forty-five minutes talking about the details of a directional sign with like the different tenants, um, who was on what side, and, uh, you know, they ended up having to either carry or like take a recess to figure it out. So if there's something, once you come into the site driveway, pointing which tenants are on what side of the building, which are on the other side, and then just maybe a small sign on each space, just clarify that for the board, so we, we know what's being asked for.
That's fine, and, and, um, I had one other question for Scott that slipped my mind now. So Scott, I'm sorry, did you, did you refer to all four sheets or just the three?
Uh, let's see. This was the first rendering, this is the whole site. Again, it's, it's not congruent with the, uh, complete landscaping plan, but you can get the idea of the scale of the buildings and how that smaller building is in character with the larger one. Uh, they're both set back very far from the road. And as I mentioned, you know, we're trying to work with earth colors, rustic colors to kind of make it blend in.
I, real quick, it, it's not conducive with the, the elevations, is it?
The grading elevations? No, no. As I mentioned before, this was an artist rendering done before that was completed, uh, basically to give you the character of the buildings.
Okay.
I believe, I'm just looking at my notes to make sure I didn't miss anything for the architects, bear with me one second, Mr. Chair, please.
Yes, sir.
Yep, that, that is all I had for, for Scott, he, he's prepared to answer any questions the board has.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I got a question, a couple of questions for Scott.
Sure.
So we have running water, we have sewer, two septic, you know, in each of the, the locations, each of the twenty-four bays. Where are the package units, the H V A C, heating and cooling? Are they going to be twenty-four separate units? Where are they going to be located? You're obviously not going to go on top of the roof with them.
Right.
So that, that's one thing, and then a follow-up to that is you got roller curtain doors, and you got vehicles that are exhausting inside the, inside the building. Where is the plan for, you know, exhaust, and so we don't asphyxiate everyone in the building?
Good questions, um, the first question you posed, um, I know, and I'll refer to Andrew on this, the intent is to have, uh, heaters uh, from the ceiling levels, and there will be air conditioning units between the, underneath the windows. Um, let me see if I can pull one up. You could, if you really squint your eyes, there's one located, it's a, a through wall unit underneath these.
Uh-oh, we lost, we lost him again.
So close.
Scott, we lost you.
Almost, almost through.
All right, well, we, we got a lot done with him at least, so we may have to come back with that. Scott?
Like, I, I see the, the units underneath the windows there.
Yes.
E- each unit has an air conditioner up underneath it.
And then the, the exhaust question, I'm not, if we can't hear him, he's not going to be able to answer that. Scott?
I guess the assumption too would be that the air, when air conditioner warehouse space, just the office.
Yeah, they, the air conditioner is just in the office, looks like.
And so the, so the heaters would be in the warehouse space, like almost ceiling mounted, you know, uh, to heat the, the warehouse space is what it sounds like.
Well, that, that's testimony he can put on the record at the next meeting.
I agree.
Right.
All right, Mr. Chair, now that, since we've lost the architect, unfortunately, um, we're going to have to ask the board's indulgence and carry this to a date certain so that we can address the issues that came up tonight, and hopefully finish the balance of the testimony.
Okay, and we will need an extension of time, Sal.
Yes, of course.
Okay, um, Eileen, what do we have open? You're muted.
You're muted. Mr. Alferi, how much time do you need? I'll give you what I have, September thirteenth has two cases already scheduled. September twenty-seventh has one bulk variance application. October fourth has one extension of time hearing.
So the, I know that the, um, September twenty-seventh, both Mr. Hopkins and I have a hearing down in South Jersey.
Okay.
Then what was the next one?
October fourth.
I will not be here.
Yeah, and I, uh, fortunately, October fourth, I have two hearing applications already scheduled for Jackson.
October twenty-fifth? There's nothing on the agenda right now.
Well, I, I will make that work for me, um, and I'm looking, waiting for a text from any professional saying no, and nobody said no, so that I request the October twenty-fifth date then, everybody said good.
Okay, October twenty-fourth.
For notice.
Yeah, okay, um, for members of the public, we will be opening the public as soon as testimony, direct testimony from the applicant is completed. Uh, case number B A twenty-ten-one oh eight. Uh, Brookstone at Soliform L L C will be carried to October twenty-fifth with no further notice at seven P M.
Do we need an extension of time? Yes, we do. Yes, I, I will grant the board an extension through November fifteenth, or is that work for you?
Yes.
And do you need a, a letter to follow that up?
If you want, it's not required, uh, and as of right now, that meeting may be on Zoom. We're not sure, we're going month to month right now.
Right, if, if, if for some reason that me, if we, if we change it from Zoom to live, I'll probably re-know this.
That's fine.
We would have to.
Yeah, but as of right now, it's going to still be on Zoom.
That's fine, perfect.
And Eileen, if, if possible, I hope our schedule, not real busy, please keep the twenty-fifth just with their case on there, if we can.
I'll try.
Yeah, I, yeah, because it's going to take on on you. You know, by the time we open the public and move through that, it, it's going to be on me.
Okay.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business before the board?
Oh, sir.
Okay, the reason I said I'm not here October fourth, it's my birthday, and I've already, they, they're taking me out, so.
Good for you.
Just another year down, that's all it falls down to.
That means you're in the hot seat, Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
Yeah, and Paul, make sure you show up.
Paul's going out with me. It leaves Mr. Merton. Uh, okay, uh, if there's no other business before the board, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Hughes, do I second?
I'll second it.
Second about Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
All ahead.
All opposed, okay, thank you, guys, I appreciate everybody showing up.
Good night, be safe.
Night.
Take care, everyone.
Good night.